We're gonna go ahead and get started at 6:00. And we're gonna call the July 18th meeting to order. And we call it a roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
I'm sorry. Pledge of allegiance. Mr. Brown, would you please today, please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Thank you. I think for me, September 18th. Two, call roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Mayor Hoag.
Here.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
Here.
Councilmember Randles.
For.
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna move into public participation. And we have a part from Mr. Benson.
Well, we all know what I'm here for, right? I'm waiting for a response from the city council or the attorney for you guys laughing at me at a council meeting. Hoag, you were at my house just months before that.
John, just a minute, John, just a minute. I was at your house one time many years ago.
No, you weren't.
John, don't start with me.
Yeah, that's right, three years ago at this meeting.
You, you say like you and I are best social friends. I don't wanna hear that because we're not.
Well, you're listening to it, man.
And well, I'm.
You were at my house four months before the board laughed at me, man.
John.
You sent my condo a bill for that fuse breaker. Mr. Randles over here stood up during the first meeting I came to about that being laughed at. I know you live on Tyler John, but the attorney, go back to the CD, man, they're laughing at me. The attorney refers to me as a cookie that crumbled. I can't help it that you cut it out of the CDs. What are they laughing about? What's so funny? One board member tells, says that he has a cot in his warehouse. And I got a cot next door to me, rent my unit. All three had to do was ask him, but she wouldn't do it. She goes and asks Kevin Mann, Spaceman Storage. I didn't know he was gonna lie, Hoag. What about a lawyer laughing at somebody homeless? You either want them to hurt themselves or somebody else. Think about it, there's people in here. You can bring it on there, that lawyer can bring it in here. And I found out, someone called me when I was out west, said that he and Kim Cot won't do anything, get in trouble because they're Jewish. Let me tell you something, ask Judge Rainwater what school I went to, she'll tell you, a Jewish school, the most nasty school there is. How about that? Ask Judge Rainwater, maybe is that why, is that why Anthony isn't here tonight? And I'd like to also point out this guy over here, he gave me credit and that girl that was in the meeting that, that was here for the signs, she might've been the one that went and told the police that Kevin Mann's son was breaking the law. Cause she said that night when I was talking about Kevin, I said, she would be interested in it. She said, I'm listening. So it might've been her. They didn't, they didn't do it for me, cause I, I told them about Kevin Mann a year ago.
And the way you're carrying on, if I gave you credit, I might have to take it back. You just need to chill.
Yeah, I know, I do, but I don't need to be laughed at because you think I'm homeless. It was wrong, you weren't, you weren't on the board, I don't mean to, you know. But you came up and gave me credit and said that, yeah, yeah, that's right, take it back cause it's probably her. They didn't ever listen to me before. Hoag, I'll go back to the condos to have the record where you sent a bill there for that.
John, you do whatever you want, John.
You're gonna hear this and tell Kevin.
I was in your house one time.
I told you Kevin and his wife are gonna come in here and apologize for what they did. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hoag.
You have a good evening. Goodnight. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna move into our consent agenda. We have three items.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there is, I did want to announce there was, there are two minor changes requested to consent agenda item number three. And that's attachment four. That would be the Florida Green Finance Authority Agreement. So under paragraph 11, where it discusses resale or refinancing of a property, they're asking for a minor change in the last sentence that will read, "The authority agrees to provide written disclosure of this matter to all City of Cape Canaveral property owners that may apply to the program instead of utilize." And then also a change to their notice address.
Mayor, excuse me, Fran Redmond, but do you have her site, where we're at exactly?
That's where I'm looking at it. Your ordinance 217-01, is that correct? Our resolution 20...
Twenty seventeen.
Where are you at, on what page are you on that?
Yes, this is attached to Resolution 2017-13. And it is the agreement.
I don't know, I've looked at three, but he asked me what page you're reading from.
Okay. In that Florida Green Finance Authority Agreement, it's, that is exhibit A. On page number three. Title resale or refinancing of a property.
Okay.
The last sentence there should read, "The authority agrees to provide written disclosure of this matter to all City of Cape Canaveral property owners that may apply to the program rather than utilize."
Got it.
Also on page four, under paragraph 15, which is titled notices.
Okay.
They have requested a change to the notice address that will be used. So staff is in agreement with myself that these are minor changes and should not require special motion to be pulled from the consent agenda, but I did want to bring those changes to the council's attention.
Item number four, page four.
Yes, page four of the, of the agreement in paragraph 15. It says notices.
Right.
I'm looking at the agreement itself. Where it says if to the authority.
At the attention of our chair at 508 members.
Right, and it will be to a different address. They've requested any notices, for example, if you were to terminate the. Agreement. That that notice would go to a different address.
So this address in here is.
Correct, correct.
And we are very comfortable with that, as at most House Clinton, to be honest. And we're just out of an abundance of caution, so there's no question later on that the city council approves something that was slightly different and when we go to signing, in this case, the mayor, everything will just match up with what was just said essentially. More than anything, it's a transparency question issue.
It's confusing, starting.
Oh, it is. Yeah, this is one of those days that wants to be challenging and because we've had so many agenda items, so many complex issues and all preceded by budget workshop.
So there's only change ahead of.
Those two changes.
Ready, with it?
I'm with it.
Okay, so we have three, three items and noted changes on item three. We want to have a motion.
Mayor, I would move for approval of the consent agenda, all three items, taking into consideration of the changes that were just presented to us.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Randall and a second by Mrs. Walsh to accept the consent agenda, which changes on item three.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh. For.
Okay, we will move now to public hearings, item number four. This is based on revenue from wastewater resolutions for the fiscal year of 2016, '17 up to 2021. You have your matrix sales, everybody, I'm sure is what that. I think the increase is kind of slight for five-year period, but we can manage it very well for the last five years, very slight increases. We will have the attorney. You got the.
I will, yes, Resolution number 2017-08, a resolution of the city council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Rivarre County, Florida, establishing the city's reclaim water rates in accordance with Article 4 of Chapter 78 of the City Code for City fiscal years 2016 slash 2017 through 2020 slash 2021, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, incorporation into Appendix B, schedule of fees, severability, and an effective date.
Mayor, having read Resolution 2017-08 and finding it in agreement with what was just given, the heading, I would recommend approval of, that's a resolution, so this is the only time we're here.
So then we go to the public first, then we'll.
We do need to have the public hearing open before.
We're gonna go to public first and then we'll take your motion. If you are making a motion, you know what you're trying to do.
I see.
Yeah, we need to have a little public discussion first.
Okay.
I know we all wanna get there, the idea of let's, let's open it to the public, is there people here that would like to speak of the wastewater resolution that we're talking about? Very good, we'll disclose public discussions and bring it back to us again.
Okay, then Mayor, based on the fact, after the public hearing on the resolution, I thought that public hearing was only about ordinances, but in any event, I would move for approval of Resolution number 2017-08 about the reclaim water rates.
Okay.
Second.
I have a second on the Resolution 2017-08, call roll.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh. For.
Okay, we're gonna go up to item number five. That's our ordinance 07-2017. Sorry, let's skip to. Okay, we have a Resolution 2017-09 revising the city's sanitary sewer service fee schedule. And go ahead and read that one, please.
Yes, Resolution number 2017-09, a resolution of the city council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Rivarre County, Florida, revising the city's sanitary sewer service fee schedule in accordance with Article 3 of Chapter 78 of the City Code for City fiscal years 2016 slash 2017 through 2020 slash 2021, repealing the rental property rate category and providing for ratification of sewer rates for sewer customers affected by said repeal, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions, incorporation into Appendix B, schedule of fees, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, I looked at this and I like the, my Coco sewer rates, did I get on some of my properties in Coco, and I'll tell you what, we're, we're in heaven compared to what's across the river on the sewer rates. But we're gonna go ahead and let the public speak. I don't know if anybody here wants to talk on the proposed sewer rates that we have tonight. That's what we're going through right now. Somebody wants to talk, who close public discussion and bring it back to the council? I, I think for what we got out behind the gates out there, that a lot of people don't probably go see, you got a very good low cost rate for what we got, the circuits that we got and for the facilities. I've known people that have been around the world at different wastewater treatment plants, and one gentleman told me that he's never seen one as clean and organized as this one. And I've seen some other ones too, but it was something that was relayed to me about six months ago, somebody that travels the world does wastewater facilities. I'm well in tune with what we're paying here, how it's being spent.
That being the case, I would move that we approve item four B, I'm sorry.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim McMillan, second by Mike Brown.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For.
Councilmember Walsh. For.
Okay, now we have the one item five, I'm sorry. This is an ordinance 07-2017, and it's, it's for the adoption of the paperwork that we just went through, with the $6.2 million loan of our capital improvement program for the next five years, we hope to. Bring a lot of nice things. Would I, something, please?
Ordinance number 07-2017, an ordinance of the City of Cape Canaveral, Rivarre County, Florida, adopted in furtherance of the requirement set forth in section 2.125, Cape Canaveral Charter, authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $6,200,000 capital improvement revenue note, Series 2017, of the City of City, to finance the cost of a multi-generational center, cultural arts preservation enrichment, Cape Center, and related capital improvements, providing for the Series 2017 note to be secured by the city's public service tax, half-cent sales tax, guaranteed entitlement, communication service tax, and certain franchise fees, authorizing the city's financing team to proceed to develop necessary documents, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, or parts of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions in conflict here with severability and an effective date. This is second reading.
Thank you. Okay, council, top down, discussion.
I think we've had a lot of discussion of this, sir.
Everybody comfortable with it? Move to public. Okay, open to public discussion. If you have anything you wanna talk about on this matter, what it is, it boils down to a $6.2 billion loan that the city is getting ready to close on at the end of the week. And as for many capital projects, that's gonna be done in the city. Improvements to our park, baseball park, improvements to the old city hall, which we're ready to move out of, improvements to, out of the baseball park, would be a lot of improvements, but I'm gonna let Mr. Green talk about it, cause he's proud of this one, so.
Okay, okay.
Pardon? Oh, close public, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now I can, I can talk. And I will be.
I'm ready to go.
I'm sure everybody's like me, we feel like it's been a long day and I'm, but anyway, briefly, the, everything that the City of Cape Canaveral is doing and has done for the last several years is rooted in the community visioning effort that occurred in the approximately 2009, 2010 time period. This city council, the city manager, the staff continues to proceed forward with implementing those recommendations and those items that the citizens said were important to them. And in this particular instance, the multi-generational facility will be approximately 19,000 square feet in size, two-story, give or take a little bit, and it'll provide a number of amenities internally and externally, opportunities for events and rentals for weddings or, or activities. Additionally, a physical section that will, you know, where you can lift weights and workout and aerobics and all of those kinds of things. Additionally, it will house our PAL program and our youth center building will go away and will finally officially give our, the children and the youth of Cape Canaveral a really great place to, to visit, engage with one another, participate in positive activities, indoor volleyball, indoor basketball, those things. We envision a running track or walking track upstairs, and if we can get away with it from an insurance point of view, there will be a, a properly safe slide for those that want to come down the chutes, shall we say, like you see at a water park, rather than taking the elevator or taking the steps. So it's going to be a really cool facility. What we have in mind for the longer haul, as well as a splash pad, because Cape Canaveral does not have a swimming pool, a skate park, two levels, basically, the beginner's level, the intermediate, connect the park better and make it much more pleasant and engaging place, access, and all of those kinds of facilities will be part of Canaveral City Park. We have a possibility of getting some additional outside funding to help us complete this project as we may well also with the Cape Center, it's not a done deal, it's in the conversation stage, but certainly we, if we can leverage more money from other parties, then we'll further be able to amp up the amenities of, of these programs and the activities in this particular area of the city. But from there, the, I think many in the community have been very interested in the arts and culture, we have some fantastic artists in Cape Canaveral. And when we open the new city hall, which will be soon, right, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. April 30th, June 30th, May 30th, August 30th, whatever. But anyway, at some point, we're actually gonna be in there. And on display as part of that will be either loaned or given outright beautiful pieces of art done by Cape Canaveral artists. And I'm absolutely amazed at the quality of those things and what they're probably, and I don't mean things in a derisive way, it's just like, they're beautiful, they're gorgeous, they're extremely well done, and extraordinarily valuable. And to think that we either get them loaned to us or given to us, for, to me, is absolutely positively mind-boggling, because they have some pretty significant commercial value or sales value to the artist, so a labor of love, and my gosh, we totally appreciate that and probably put it on display. And of course, after I did that, then I said, we'll take more, please, you know how it goes, they hand out. But it's going to be a great thing, and we want to continue to move forward with implementing the community's vision, and we're here because of you all, and we're trying to get it right always. But I can go on, but that's probably enough. Yeah, I'm in love with it.
Yeah, everybody have it, they do with it.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I need to explain a little bit. If I understand, we're authorizing the issuance of this note.
Yes, 6.2 million, the interest rate is 2.05%. The current 10-year T-bill note rate as of yesterday was 2.31%, we're coming in at 2.05 with, we call them Hancock Bank, technically, it's another group that's doing business, Whitney Bank doing business as Hancock. But again, from a timing point of view, we've been most fortunate, i.e. lucky, in hitting the, the kind of the valley, if you will, of the 10-year note rates. And again, realistically, that's lower than the projected inflation rate, and we know darn well that the feds are going to continue their initiative to increase rates. And so when we look at construction timing and opportunities and everything, it just seems like all the stars have aligned for us on this particular initiative, and we get to give our residents a really wonderful group of facilities for enjoyment for decades to come.
Okay, Mayor, if I may speak a little bit simply, because I voted against this at the first public hearing, and it's done some research and I changed my mind, and I'd like to say the reason why, under section two findings, I'm on page two, and it's because there's a clause in here that says, "The city will never be required to levy ad lorm taxes or any property therein to pay the principal and neanderst on this." And that says that it will be paid for through the half-cent sales tax, public service tax, any entitlements that we may get, communication service tax fees, and anything that's pledged there, but it will not come from ad lorm. Am I speaking correctly?
That is correct, that's the revenue stream with pledges and the information the council has received and.
Okay.
Some time indicates the coverage level that occurs.
Because I did speak against it in the first hearing, and this is the second public hearing, and I'd like to change my opinion and speak for it. I believe this is satisfying to what I was looking for, is a method how we're gonna pay for it without ad lorm taxes. Thank you.
So one of our other notes paid off in what, five years?
Yeah, the, the current one that did the, the city hall, the fire station, and some wastewater treatment plant, and lots of numbers done, so long around in my empty brain, but I believe that's 23, 24 fiscal year that that is paid off. And again, as we talked about at the budget workshop, we have the opportunity to probably a green light from the county on our CRA revenue stream as well, present and into the future. So, so I think we're, we're about, setting about as well as one can these days.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ready? You got anything?
I was just gonna get ready to make a motion, I was gonna get ready to make a motion. Are we ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I make a motion to a top warden.
Anybody wanna interject into this before we? Okay, we did need to go back to this, but we'll make sure everybody understands what's happening. This is a big loop in my book for this city.
Could you explain it to me?
You do a good job of that, but I'm, I'm appalled with the number of the roll. So let's do a motion.
I make a motion to top warden's number 07-2017 at the second reading, which also includes authorizing to approve Whitney Bank Doing Business as Hancock Bank as the lender of preparation of the law documents.
A second. Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Walsh to the second back, Mr. Brown, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh. For.
Okay, now we have a resolution, let's tie it back into this, 2017-10.
Resolution number 2017-10, a resolution of the City of Cape Canaveral, Rivarre County, Florida, supplementing city ordinance number 07-2017 enacted on July 18th, 2017, by accepting the proposal of Whitney Bank Doing Business as Hancock Bank to purchase the city's not-to-exceed $6,200,000 capital improvement revenue notes. $6,200,000 capital improvement revenue note, Series 2017, authorizing the issuance of the 2017 note and execution and delivery of a loan agreement with said bank to secure the repayment of the 2017 note, authorizing the proper officials of the city to take any other action deemed necessary or advisable in connection with the finalization and execution of the loan agreement, the 2017 note, and the security therefore, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents in connection with said loan, designating the 2017 note as bank-qualified, providing for repeal or supersession of prior inconsistent city resolutions or actions, providing for severability and other matters in regard thereto, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, council. Hold the dice.
Only in speaking to, for you to us, Mayor?
Pardon?
Are you for us as the public?
Well, go ahead. Well, if I go, you think everybody should be.
This is the second, if I understand it correctly, this is the second part, this is where we accept the proposal of the Whitney Bank, which is doing business as Hancock Bank, and for the authorizing issuance of this note to us. And it's the same note, the first we just passed was authorizing the issuance of it, and in this case, it is accepting the proposal of the bank. Why, it seems like we're saying the same thing over, but I would speak for approval of this.
Basically, our, just the backup to the, like, anybody in the public, we're going to open to public here. But what this is, is just the same thing that we heard prior to you, this is the agreement showing that we're, you might just say good earnest, I'll put it that way, without reading all the legal. But anyway, nobody has anything to mention? Say, we'll close public hearing. Come back here for a motion if we don't have any more discussion.
Motion to approve item 5, he's written. Resolution number 2017-10.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim McMillan, and the second by Mr. Bruno, for the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion to accept the proposal of the Whitney Bank doing business as Hancock Bank for the note.
Councilmember Walsh.
For.
Okay, we're going to move on to ordinance 08-2017, and this is a Cape Canaveral land development, preliminary final flats and planning and spot splits, and this is the second reading.
Ordinance number 08-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Riverdale County, Florida, amending chapter 98 of the Cape Canaveral Land Development Code relating to submittal review procedures and criteria for preliminary flats, final flats and lot splits, creating a procedure for lot line adjustments, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date.
Okay, public. We're going to have council discussion, and then we'll go to the public this one. This is something that we've seen, probably, what, two months ago, we had?
Yes.
Mr. Boger was in with Kelsey Pizza owner and...
It just simplifies a process to clean up a, a property issue, if you will, between adjacent property owners primarily, it streamlines, streamlines that process and provides some additional flexibility as well as, as to the planting process and categorization. With the key is, we want to take as much of the governmental red tape out of it as we can, and still have a, a good, solid, transparent process that's, holds us accountable for our actions, and we think we've achieved that.
Okay, we're going to go to public hearing. Does anybody have anything they want to discuss on this? If you don't know what it is, go ahead and add. Hearing this, we'll close public hearing, bring it back to us. Please motion.
Motion to approve item number 6, ordinance number 08-2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim McMillan, second by Mr. Walsh, of ordinance number 08-2017, for the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For approval of ordinance number 8, 2017, at the second public reading.
Councilmember Walsh.
For.
Okay, ordinance 2, ordinance 08-2017 is amending section of code 10 for fences, and this is changing old setback ruling, and this is also the second reading.
Ordinance number 09-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Riverdale County, Florida, amending section 110-470 of the Cape Canaveral Land Development Code to allow fences and walls six feet in height or less to be located within 15 feet of the public right-of-way on a non-conforming corner lot of record, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Council? This is, this, I'm sure you all have the little diagram that kind of explains what's happening. The old setback was 25 feet from the sideline, and it kind of gives you an idea of how it used to have to be, the fence would be behind the house, that back in there ways, but we're moving it up 15 feet from the house to the, to the sideline, which, if you drive up no points alley, you see a lot of this.
Makes sense.
Or one of, especially with side lots.
It seems pretty straightforward.
So it's something that's clarifying a problem that's been there for a long time, but we're just getting that way.
We move to approve item number 7, ordinance.
Wait, we're not taking it to public?
Oh, I thought we did that already.
Okay, anybody? Anybody in public? We're going to open public. This is a, just kind of a change of a little bit of an ordinance that's been in place for years that kind of just hurt homeowners being able to fence their property rightly, it might say. So we're just doing a little dirty laundry. You got anything?
I, I think the best way is fixing something that we ultimately costed days gone by and trying to make it right now.
It's going to be made right. This is a good correction. This is something that always bothers me, but anyway. Public, do you have anything you want to speak? Hearing nothing, we'll vote public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I would move for approval of item number 7, ordinance number 09-2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim McMillan, and second by Betty Walsh, for the roll, please.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion, second reading, approve of ordinance number 09-2017, for.
Councilmember Walsh.
For.
I guess this is where I'd be clever and try to say the fix is in, it's now fixed.
All right. I have liberated an ordinance 10-2017, and this is amending the Cape Canaveral coastal management element. And this is the first reading.
Ordinance number 10-2017, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Riverdale County, Florida, amending the city of Cape Canaveral Comprehensive Plan Coastal Management Element to bring it into conformance with Florida Statute's Chapter 2015-69, to include development and redevelopment principles, strategies and engineering solutions that reduce the flood risk in coastal areas adopted by the city council consistent with this ordinance, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, severability, incorporation into the comprehensive plan, an effective date and legal status of the plan amendments. And, and council, this is first reading, and it's also a transmittal hearing, so after this initial public hearing, assuming that the ordinance passes first reading, the city will transmit within 10 working days the comprehensive plan amendment to reviewing agencies, and the reviewing agencies may provide comments within 30 days, and then following receipt of the comments, the council may consider the ordinance for second and second reading at final adoption, and if adopted, the ordinance will not become effective until 31 days after the state land planning agency notifies the city that the plan amendment package is complete, unless it's challenged.
Is this the one where, this is the one where it's kind of a top-down thing, that the state came up with some, some things, and we just have to come up with something to satisfy the state's requirements, and this is the preliminary part of that?
This is, is kind of, yes, that's exactly what it is, is, is the first step in the journey that meets the minimum state requirements, and then, as part of where we are as a community and council's policy on sustainability and adaptability and moving the community forward as being as green as we can, other than my name, then, then we will engage in adaptation planning and implement a number of additional measures that will be beneficial to the community, puts a, a significant amount of additional responsibility on the city to, shall we say, do the right thing environmentally, because the National Flood Insurance Program is very important, obviously, to Cape Canaveral. As a result of our location, we do a pretty good job already in that we, we get a substantial discount with our program for, for our certification level. This will not harm that in any way, and, and maybe we can actually get a larger prospect rate, rate for the community members. But essentially, we're looking at it from a long-haul point of view, certainly, I, I think we're acknowledging that there seems to be climate change occurring, sea level is, it certainly seems to be rising, and a number of other issues on, on our horizon, frankly, past, present and future, and so we want to be among the leaders in this particular area of, of doing, quote, the right thing.
Thank you.
Really covers a lot of areas of infrastructure.
Mayor, may I have a question?
Invasive trees and everything.
May I have a question to the city manager, and it's kind of a tongue-in-cheek question, but we're all familiar with the comprehensive plan that we have, and how we're going to take care of our environment and everything, but this is the first reading, and I want to, like, most of us have, and there's a whole booklet here to add, this could take a whole department. Does it come with a lot of money to do, to take care of?
As you well know. As you well know.
Don't put the money on.
Yeah, it's another one of those. I, I think, you know, it's one of those things that we inherit from our big brothers that know so much more than we do at the local level.
Yeah, it's, you know, we're going to save a little field mouse and everything like that, that's great, but it would take three people working every day, all day.
Well, we, we have made initial contact with the Regional Planning Council, and I think we're going to be part of an, an initiative, if I can keep my tongue from being tied tonight, that will help, at least from the beginning phases of it, keep our costs relatively low to perhaps nothing, I believe is perhaps where we are. But anyway, it's, it's part of the, the long-term feeling of, of our community and the visioning and, you know, being proper stewards in all respects, and we do get some benefits with the tax reductions or insurance rate categorization to, that saves, at least the citizens that are paying for this affected seventy-two dollars from their flood insurance bills. Similar like to the building code issue as well, where we're, you know, our city hall is an example, is, and I know you guys will correct me, because you always do, but it's either 160 or 165 wind load is what that thing is designed for. Is that correct, Johnny or, or Tom?
160 is correct.
160 is correct. You mean I'm, because I use two numbers, I hit, hit it on first try or second try, depending which way I say it. Anyway, doors and windows and roofs and everything, as did the, the new fire station we built a couple of years ago.
Did that thing, did he was going to tell you you were wrong?
Oh, they do all the time, Bob. They do all the time, yeah. In fact, they lay in wait or lie in wait, I need to go back and visit with my English teacher probably, but they did that to me.
To Rocky's point, the unfunded mandates and three people, we might consider maybe utilizing one of the boards to assist the city as well as staff as well.
We're, we're doing a lot of it already.
Yeah. And, and in all fairness, fairness goes back to the old, several-year-old comprehensive plan.
Yes.
And, and, this even now addresses Brazilian peppers. But, but, you know, we're doing all of it.
Get right down to the nitty-gritty.
Yeah, our Lone Point Park project is an example of really wrestling with invasive trees and, and all kinds of things there, and we're moving forward with that, with grant funds, ultimately, partially, never fully.
Hey, council, we'll go to public hearing. Anybody? Does your dick feel it?
No.
Yeah.
Everything the city manager said, I got a few questions about it.
Anybody in public, I know staff all understand, is anybody? If not, we'll vote public hearing, go back to this, that is what, do a motion. Is the vote?
Motion to approve item number 8, ordinance number 10-2017.
Second by Randles.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Protim McMillan, and second by Mr. Randles, vote 2011, move it to 11, I'm sorry. Hold the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag.
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan.
For.
Councilmember Randles.
For the motion.
Councilmember, Councilmember Walsh.
For.
Now we're going to go to item, which is ordinance number?
11. Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, number.
I got a, I'm looking at the roll, I gotta keep it.
Ordinance number 11. I have number 11.
Item number 11, ordinance number 11, 2017, this is prohibiting the marijuana medical treatment center dispensing facilities, but this is a first reading.
Ordinance number 11-2017, ordinance of the city council of the city of Cape Canaveral, Riverdale County, Florida, prohibiting medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities from locating within the city, adopting other conforming amendments to the city code to effectuate the prohibition of medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities within the city, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, council.
I initially read this and was kind of against it, but after speaking to the city manager, I, I am understanding now that in the short term, we're going to say, they're suggesting that we say no.
That is correct.
And in the long term, that this is just giving, buying us time in order to come up with a comprehensive plan to possibly introduce this as a later date, but rather than having an influx of unrestricted medical treatment marijuana facilities, this allows us time to come up with a comprehensive ordinance to possibly allow such things, but we're directed into, it's essentially a no for now, is, is my understanding.
Yeah, and, and if the council will indulge me ever so briefly, I'll try to be, we anticipated that the voters would approve the medical marijuana, the referendum, and they did, and but what happened in the final days of the legislature, technically, in the, the special session, they added, they finally actually, the legislature, that they finally dealt with it, and what they did is they basically preempted all city policies, rules, regulations and ordinances in the process, and what they basically said was that if you don't, they gave us two choices, prohibit them outright, or accept the fact that they have to be treated zo- them outright, or accept the fact that they have to be treated zoning, land use-wise, in all respects, very, the same as a pharmacy, in all respects. So what that led to in effect then is they can be located near schools, daycare facilities, churches, and if they so choose to have a drive-up window, like many pharmacies do, you can sit in your car and have the dispensing occur. And that just totally took too much control and our judgment away from the local residents. And so what we plan on doing is, so that we can get a handle on the curve ball they threw us, and all of the cities and all of the counties in the state of Florida, buy us some time so that we can come back and revisit our pharmacy ordinance, rules, regulations, and requirements, and see how we might properly address some of the potential concerns about that, such that we can do our best to allow those that need the opportunity to, with marijuana as a treatment, the medical marijuana, I happen to be one of them, just for the record, and deal with it in a more responsible, comprehensive way such that it won't result in any unintended consequences. What we had done in the beginning, while it was still, the games were on about when it's going to go to voters, et cetera, we had confined it to certain locations in the city, away from certain facilities, away from pain management facilities, so that we didn't have a kind of a one stop for the pain management prescription, and the next stop to pick up the medical marijuana or other items that might be dispensed therewith. And so it's a relatively brief window of opportunity, and we expect to comprehensively and responsibly deal with this because we recognize the voters have spoken, and we recognize that there is a need, or at least I do, for sure. And so that's where we're at. It's not a long-term no unless the council decides it's a long-term no. We got thrown a curveball, council's getting thrown a curveball, the city council got a curveball, or knuckleball, or a spitter from our state legislature.
What else you expect?
Yeah.
Yeah. The world according to me.
Yeah, I mean, because obviously seventy-one percent of the people elector approved it, so.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, sounds good. I just wanted to make that clear that we all understood and make sure everybody out there understands, well, this isn't the last that we're probably going to hear of this.
Treat it like a pharmacy, but that won't allow it in a pharmacy.
Well, it's so early in the game now that we don't know, currently can't smoke it.
Yes.
But Morgan and Morgan for the people are trying to make it that you can, because they think they own a couple of growing facilities. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. I'm sure it's all altruistic. But it's, the people have spoken, and I don't, I think it's something that we should at least visit and discuss at a later date, but I approve, I like how we're approaching it. It seems logical and rational before we start.
Let's do it right. Okay, we're going to go out to public with this. We're going to open the public discussion. Is that what it says, anything?
Smoke them if you got them.
We're closed public here, bring it back in a couple. Rocky, you ready to start puffing this stuff?
Yeah, I, yes, Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I had the privilege of being in Tallahassee during part of the hearings and sitting in the audience, along with some of the rest of us, I'm sure. It really boils down, like the city manager said, they said cities can either do it or not do it. That is your option. If you don't do it, then you're out of it. But if you're going to have the facilities, then you're going to have to permit them any place that you would have a pharmacy. And that, as the city manager explained, excludes drawing circles around schools, parks, churches, things like that, to try to limit the use of them. So you either said, yes, we'll want them any place that they can be, or we don't want them all. And we just bought some time to get some more on there. So we're saying, if this passes, this is a first reading, that indeed our little community of five blocks wide and a mile long, at this point in their time, has decided we do not want to provide the facilities next to a school, whatever it's going to be. So we're opting out, if I understand it correctly.
We do indeed.
There wasn't part way, or where we want it and where we don't want it. We had taken care of that many weeks in advance, putting a place where it would be acceptable. But that's why it's, at this point, it gives us some time to hear more. But I would move for approval of ordinance number 11, 2017, at the first reading, and that would be my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Randall's, and a second by Mayor Protim McMillan. Call the roll base.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Ho?
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan?
For.
Councilmember Randall's?
For the motion to approve ordinance number 11-2017 at the first reading.
Councilmember Walsh? For.
Okay, we'll move to item number 10, and this is an ordinance 12-2017, amending the section of the code 110 for cities EOOD district to allow hotels in the M1 metropolitan area of the economic overlay. And this is the first reading.
Ordinance number 12-2017, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cape Canaveral, Brevard County, Florida, amending section 110-609 of the City of Cape Canaveral Land Development Code, clarifying that hotels are permitted use in the A1A Economic Opportunity Overlay District, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to bring it to the diocese here, council. You know, when this ordinance was written first, they eliminated, or they had inadvertently left out the M1 district.
Yes, this is also one of those.
What is that?
One of those fixes that David Green and David Dickey and Todd Morley, I'll claim it if you guys will.
I wasn't here.
Okay, this is what I'm going to say. Are you trying to suggest that you're present now?
I'm kidding.
We'll use the way between us engaged. David, your face is red.
Well, this is allowing for the use, I mean, M1 is, for those of you that don't know, is an industrial zoning. And why would we allow a hotel in an industrial zone? We're kind of in a unique situation, being so close to the port, that hotels like to be close to the port because we have lots of crew tips and lots of people like to stay in hotels. And we're allowing them the option, well, possibly allowing them the option, if you want to build a hotel next to a possible future industrial site, that's your choice. But be aware, this is an industrial site. So somebody could build something next to you. But if you want to take that chance, good for you.
Yeah.
Rather than asking for a special exception, which.
Well, also choose of two of the codes because of the economic overlay district itself. One said one thing and one said the other. This makes them both say the same thing. So one is not more restrictive than the other, basically.
And we keep having our eye on, and I'll just be the one to say, transmontane property. Much rather probably look at a wonderful Homewood Suites or some such thing than those tanks.
Well, if they want to do the cleanup.
Yeah, which will not be without a challenge.
Okay, going to open up to the public. Anybody want to say something about it? Just building another hotel in a spot. Anyway, we're closed public here, nobody wants to say it. We're closed, bring it back to us.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to speak out. I didn't, I wasn't real clear which one of the three Musketeers took the blame for this.
That would be me.
Two.
That's really one for all and all for one.
Well, in any event.
It was really David Dickey.
You can, it was a little bit of joking about it. When we did this, we all did it, and we voted for it and thought we knew what we were doing. And.
And that's what you get for listening to us.
And as a result, all the vacant land is an industrial area, and that's where the hotels could, would, should be, next to the port, not next to us here in the residential area. And we put them into a special exception, which means they had to go through lots of hoops and bells and whistles and things to get it. And so they haven't been going there. So with that in mind, I would move for approval of, we'll come right back to the very beginning here, I would move for approval of ordinance number 12-2017. It's really a housekeeping item, but it needs, it was an ordinance for public hearing when we did it, and it has to be an ordinance for public hearing when we revise it. And I would make that in the form of a motion at our first reading.
Next second.
Okay, thank you, Ray. We have a motion by Mr. Randall's, and a second by Mrs. Walsh, pass ordinance 12-2017. Hold on.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Ho?
For.
Mayor Protim McMillan?
For my.
Councilmember Randall's?
For the motion at the first reading.
Councilmember Walsh?
For.
Okay, that brings us now to item number 11, and this is for removal of a specimen tree at 226 Polk Avenue. This is, I guess, a home that was purchased just recently, and they ordered her here in the audience, I'm sure.
This is, I guess, this is a home that's right directly across the street at 226 Polk, and I thank Daniel and his spouse for buying it.
We're not sure that way.
It's been a vacancy, and I won't say an high score, but it's been something we look at and try not to show people that when we drive past. But it's a small home right across the street, and it's an older home, and very small square footage. But at the time, it had, it grew a tree in the back, which I think is really two trees, two or three grew there together. And he wants to enlarge the house, and the section comes to us.
Would it tear the house down?
Yeah. He simply wants to do away with the 500 square foot home on the lot and make it something in today's standard. It's probably way back into 50, Daniel, when was it?
Yeah, it was like 50.
So in order to do that, there is a tree, two trees, maybe even three growing together in the backyard. And his, his request is since we do not allow large trees to just be cut down at random, come for us and ask for permission. And it isn't a free permission because what I understand is comes replacing it somewhere else.
I think there's a one-to-one mitigation of this one.
That is correct. That's what we're recommending, yes, sir.
So I'll listen to the other people in this case talk about it, but in my mind, I sent to a request, we authorize approval of the tree located 226 Polk Avenue, in a mitigation ratio of one-to-one, means he replaces the inches someplace else or pays into a tree bank to put a tree into your park or wherever it goes.
And it does affect, there's two other oaks that you're keeping, which is awesome. So that's, I understand property.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Coon, the current, the house currently now is 500 square feet, is that correct?
It's very small.
Yeah, I don't know about the 500 number, but it's, oh, it's small.
It's hard to tell because they've enclosed the utility room and the porch and the carport, so it's hard to tell where the house is.
How large a house do you plan on?
If you will address, it'll be pretty rough, so.
Oh, okay.
Forty.
How large a house do you plan on?
Tell us the yard, what? Sorry. It's, we're, we're.
Your name, please.
Oh, right, right with the record. Daniel Coon?
With the record.
Right. Single-family residence, single-story, it's probably going to be in a neighborhood of 2,600 square feet or so, it's the lot size allowance. Yeah, if the tree was in the front yard, we wouldn't be here. But it's in the back where the house is, it would, new construction would be extending to it. And the lot is low and needs to be, you know, by code, needs to be brought to grade with, in relation to the road, so that would put the tree, you know, where it exists, a foot or so under, foot to eighteen inches under dirt, which it, I don't know, I'm not an arborist, but I don't think that would be good for it, so.
It'll kill it.
You know, I'm kind of, we're kind of caught between one ordinance and another here.
Just glad you're buying the property and fixing it up a little bit.
Oh, absolutely, the construction, yeah.
Thank you for your letter. It's very self-explanatory of, about where the tree is located, the footprint, the canopy.
Yeah, we've been, we've been hindered to perform the demolition because it goes over the house, and the demolition company said, no, we can't like pull it out from underneath it, so.
And none of us have ever like taken down any of our trees in this situation. It's understandable that something needs to be done.
I would like to talk to you afterwards. I try and do something with my, with my salary every year, and I've been kind of looking for a specimen tree to like try and move. And I'm willing to investigate or look into, if you're willing to try and work with me, to use those funds to possibly make a test case of this and try and move it and see if we can actually maybe save the tree at a reasonable cost, but up to my annual salary, I guess. If you're willing to look at that. I mean, if not, I'm all for the, I mean, I don't like cutting down trees, but I see your, I see your point, but.
Yeah.
But if there's any way to, if you're willing to work with me a little bit.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Such a neat idea.
If not on your property, maybe we can put it on the city property or something.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be a follow-on question, is the mitigation apparently doesn't have to be on my property. We could do it like at the school or the library or.
Yeah. Probably, we would prefer that to be in one of our parks, although.
Oh, yeah.
Perhaps Banana River or even Manatee. We may be able to find a spot for it, perhaps at the new, ultimately, Canaveral City Park. I think Mayor Protim McMillan and I spoke about this, and not trying to throw the council any, anything out of left field, but part of our conversation was that perhaps in this instance, if he can, you know, pay a part of the cost, if there's some additional cost, as city manager, I'd say, if it's within reason, we could go ahead and have the city match or somehow participate with the Mayor Protim on this as a test, and see if we can find a good location for it and a good home, and if we can make these kind of situations successful going, going forward from here. So just kind of to let you know that I've been gabbing in, and that there may be a possibility that we can turn this into a beautiful situation for the property owner, for Brendan giving up hard-earned money, and the city giving up a little bit of its dollars to turn this into a replanted oak of large size in a, on a city property somewhere.
Yeah, just kind of, like I said, a test case to see, I mean, we may move it, or may, may not, but if we move it and it dies, it may die, but at least it won't be a city expense, and I guess inadvertently it would be. But anyways, just a test case, maybe in the future, if it does work out, this might be a feasible option in the future.
If you're.
Oh, more than welcome, yeah, I'd love to save it. It's a very, it's a healthy tree. If it's in the front yard, we wouldn't be here.
Right, of course. It might be.
Was there any discussion with arborists or the possibility of this?
He would be part of the decision-making process as is, as part of the chain of command, and certainly, I think there will be some private sector arborists as well that would offer their opinion on it. But I think it's an opportunity to create a win-win-win situation for the community. We get a brand-new couple thousand square foot home in Cape Canaveral within our CRA. And so we're hitting on a lot of cylinders and checking a lot of boxes with this. And with your cooperation and Brendan's and some from the city and the city team, if you will, I know they all cooperate, then we might be able to turn this into a success story.
All right.
One of our, our director of finance just said, this is a tremendous opportunity. Get him credit.
It is getting late, Mayor, can we move on?
Is this where we're talking about impersonating Elvis or anything like that?
Okay, I. Okay, I, I don't like seeing trees being taken down, but moving them, I got no problem with it.
Well, I would, just to be clear, I would move that we accept the, the item as written, but as long as we are of the understanding that we'll, we'll work together. It's not a condition of anything. It's just a, approve, I would move that we approve it as written, but as long as everyone will work with me.
So you're making a motion of the tree removal to be removed as written? As Mr. Brown, you second it. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim McMillan and a second by Mr. Brown to call to remove the tree.
Councilmember Brown?
For the motion.
Mayor Hoag?
For.
Mayor Pro Tim McMillan?
For.
Councilmember Randles?
For the motion.
Councilmember Walsh?
For.
There's a meeting to use on our agenda, but we have reports. We can do a real quick, uh, question, yes, I'll be cool.
No report. Thanks for having me.
We're gonna jump over you, you talk.
You're gonna make it hard for me. Okay, she said thanks for having me, I'm gonna say thanks for putting up with me.
Thanks, Mayor, Mr. Green. Betty, you go ahead.
You've been here since four o'clock, so I'm okay today.
Okay. Rocky, you got the pump charge week?
What is that, 10 after 7?
Yeah.
Oh, we've still got a lot of time.
Yeah, there was the time when 7 would be just when we got started, not when we just finished.
Morning, 2:00 in the morning, go to the...
A lot, so I have to give it my time.
Yeah, I'd like to share something I didn't get to last time, we're out of time. I had the privilege of being invited out on the big Coast Guard ship that came here. And was it the Eagle, was that the name?
Yeah.
And our council member, were you the official pilot? You were there, you were in the wheelhouse.
Yeah, I got to drive it.
So he got to drive the big boat, the sailboat with the sails in. So in any event, quite a, quite a task. It was the Eagle that came here, there's only one or two of them in the whole nation. It's a Coast Guard ship, big picture of it with the flags. I rode out there, pilot boat took us out and he brought us back in. Quite an experience, so thank you for that. Had occasion to be in the audience of a speaker from our little group here, Blue Origin, which is in the AJT building. And this young one was Gray Robinson and it's Scott Henderson. And he spoke of some of the things that the future of Blue Origin has got into and getting into and is really way out there. So they're temporarily located in our AJT building on A1A and they're building the big 947,000 square foot up on Enterprise, but something good. I worked with Space Coast Area Transit. I was successful in getting 1,406,211 state funds. I get capital money to buy buses, bus shelters, but I can't get 20 cents an hour for the drivers. Something wrong with this picture. But, so anyhow, we got $1,406,000 for that. And the other night, League of Cities meeting, something very interesting, which probably part of the reason to be changing, whoa, changing courses here, is the mayor was there, you served down at the meeting, Bob, and we got a whole big presentation on social media put on Florida League of Cities. So I asked Holly, the lady that I had had privilege working with many years ago, and she sent it back and I gave a copy of the slides, I gave it to Josh. That is the much bigger future than I ever envisioned. How much time the average person spends on there texting back and forth and unknown to me, but how much time you are expected to be texting if you're on Facebook? You don't just put your picture on there and walk back and say, bring on the fans. It is a working procedure. So that was worthwhile, and that's all I got. Go.
Okay. On the 10th, on the 10th of July, the Space Coast League of Cities had their, their monthly meeting and a resolution was presented. Resolution was, resolution of Space Coast League of Cities, a Florida nonprofit corporation urging the United States Congress to pass legislative legislation that levies an annual increase in revenue, neutral carbon fee, and dividend and provide an effective date. It's basically, they're saying, well, the City of Cape Canaveral, are we gonna support these kind of legislation dealing with climate control? Our neighbor, Satellite and Cocoa Beach also approved a resolution. We didn't have our city council meeting prior to this resolution, so I took it upon myself that the city would support this resolution. I think Mr. Green would agree that that's something that we would support and I give my vote of approval.
Well, thank you for paying the $5,000 fee, that's all right.
I don't know, I, I hear a lot of people complaining about this as if they're taxing tax. And I, it only come up only just, what, the last two votes, the last person? And I'm getting a lot of they, they from people. They're not very supportive of this and I don't feel if anybody in here would like to talk about it. I'm kinda, I'm offensive again, I don't really quite understand, you know, they're gonna start taxing fossil fuels heavily? And fossil fuels are probably one of the cheapest means of... As a kid, I can remember fossil fuels being the easiest. So it's, it's, where are we going with this? Is it something that's, and the money's gonna be paid back to the homeowners? That has yet to been decided. They want you to, they want you to support something, you don't have all the package put together yet.
Right, and I guess it's up for interpretation, what you, what you think about fossil fuels. And like I said, we as a city have not met, and I guess that's up to your, fossil fuel, in my opinion, is a old outdated form of energy.
Yeah, it is. But there's still, still needs of it, but it's not only fossil fuels, it's clean energy fuels.
Yeah, there, I offer a thought in this instance. Let staff do some research and see what we can find in the form of data and information.
Right, this is nothing binding as far as...
On the issue, I, I know that there are those of us that are transitioning towards definitely electrical vehicles and certainly the city's making investments in that area as well with the charging stations and having an electric vehicle. And, you know, the last I knew, and that's scary when I use those words, is it seemed like the best potential longer-term solution was hydrogen and, and its impacts and those kinds of things, but the issue is just like with the electric vehicles now is we're so used to, shall we say, a gas station or a filling station on every corner, that we, we have to look at that from a convenience and practicality point of view as we go off into the future. And certainly, we've transitioned and intend to continue unless you guys tell me no with the electrical vehicles and that is the next step in, in progress. But let us do some research, see what we can come up with and if we can find a way to provide you information that will aid to all of our knowledge bases to include staffs as well as mine, and then we can kind of see where we go from there. So a measured approach to see where we need to go for sure, okay?
Yeah, my question's on a, like, I'm not against it. I just have a lot of unanswered questions. They're gonna, they're gonna tax that guy over there for having an electric vehicle and that savings that he has saved, the taxes that were paid on this guy over here that doesn't have an electric vehicle or a flex fuel car or burns coal for heat or paroxene or whatever. And so that guy's gonna pay taxes on that. Now they're gonna tax money they're gonna give back to the households. They haven't said how they're gonna do that. They're gonna give the people back the tax. I can see that happening, just like the lottery and the, you know, other things, these guys' brainstorms. I, I think the answer that I need before, I also support it if it's a good issue, but I wanna see the, I wanna see, I wanna see how we're gonna put this game together before we start playing. They haven't done any of that. They want you to support something and you don't know what they're gonna do.
Sounds well.
Well, that's what I'm saying. What is that type of thing, I'm very cautious of. I want the people that, the people that have the flex fuel cars, is the guy or the guy that has an electric car, he's the guy that should get the tax. But everybody's got the household, everybody's household's gonna get a, a gift of this tax to get back to you, even though you have a participating one. Not gonna happen.
And you were, you were at the meeting, Bob, and what, basically what they said, I didn't really wanna vote on it. Basically, I was putting my opinion out there and the city does not have to stand behind that. But it's just basically the Space Coast League of Cities.
When you're, when you're at that meeting, you, you, you're, you speak what you think and then bring it back to the dais, but I, I have no, no, you know, no way to even say it.
Yeah, you couldn't, we couldn't talk about it.
I'm not, I'm not an arborist, I'm a, I look at this kind of stuff that they, they bring, you know, the League of Cities is pushing it hard for some reason, I don't know why. I would think that somebody up there would say, well, gee whiz, you know, what's the rules of this game we play here?
Yeah, and I think therein, the devil certainly is in the details of all that and I'll, I'll make my political comment with the way Congress is these days, it'll never happen.
Let's find out what all the rules are, that we'll support it or not support it. That's what I feel about it. But I have been getting a lot of, a lot of flak over this, people that have heard about it, oh, you know, but there's taxing fuels down, they're all ins and outs. So I stand, though, I, I hear back from staff.
They're moving, ports moving forward with drawn-up plans for the cruise terminal three, and for those of you that don't know, cruise terminal three is where the Victory Casino is. And this impacts us how? Well, they're gonna be, they're designing it for an oasis class, which carries up to 6,500 passengers. And that's another 2,500 cars, maybe 3,000 cars going to the ship and another 3,000 cars or so going away from the ship on George King Boulevard, which is right next door to us. So anyway, I, I'm sure Todd is all over that, like a wet shirt.
Trying to get roads connecting.
Excellent. And, well, unfortunately, most of them are heading to 528, so that road is gonna have some major, major changes and challenges and stuff and just wanna make sure that we're, we're covered, we're keeping an eye on it, so. The other thing is, is life is like peanut butter and jelly sandwich, and it gets you all wondering why I just said that. It's a balance. Some people like a lot of jelly, some people like a lot of peanut butter, which is, I want a little bit more peanut butter on mine, which is why my family and I decide that I'm not gonna run for council this next time, just so I can spend more time with the fam. I know it's an excuse that everybody uses, but there's a reason everybody uses it. And I'm more willing to go on the detail for anybody that's willing to. I see one of my possible opponents in here, thank you for running, or two of them? Oh, excellent. Oh, outstanding, excellent. I didn't realize that there were two in here. Well, you have one less now. Thank you for running. It's been an honor and a privilege. I have enjoyed it, but right now I have two little kids and I wanna spend a little bit more time with them right now and I'll be back a couple of years. I'll be back, but right now it's time to focus on my family and work. So I appreciate it and I look forward to contributing in different ways in the city, but right now it's just, my peanut butter and jelly sandwich needs a little bit more balance.
Will you just mention one thing if you don't mind?
Well, I have a double there, but I would like to say, President, like, work with you. But I, I, that's good. Family comes first.
I just wanted to say that now, too, so in case anybody who's thinking about it, there's no, there's plenty of time, the packages are still available till...
Through qualifying, which ends on the 25th of August at 5:00 noon, that's a Friday.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there now, so people, if you're thinking about it, maybe have more...
But don't wait till last minute.
Yeah, don't wait till last minute, 'cause then that sheet goes bananas with it. More than well, talk to anybody who's interested, pitfalls, trials, whatever, just to help out.
I'm just gonna add on that because my seat's also gonna be available because I am churning out. So I think a lot of people know that, 'cause I've gotten a lot of phone calls, I've had a lot of conversations, but there's gonna be two open seats here and the two folks that are in those seats aren't running, so it's gonna be a good opportunity for people. So thank you two for putting your packets in, anybody else that wants to. Again, you can also talk to me, as well as Brendan, I've been on council now for nine years, pretty much loved every minute of it. It does have its ups and downs, I'm not gonna say it doesn't, but this is a great group to work with, a great council to work with. I've worked with various people over the years that I've been here. So any questions you have for me, feel free to call me, I'll be happy to sit down with you, talk with you over the phone or whatever. But you've got two seats here, so people that are interested, go ahead, get, pick up that packet.
Rocky's gonna run. He just said it, he's gonna run.
I don't have anything, I'd like to just thank staff for the ordinances that we've worked tonight, which we were well in need of. And I would like to thank the staff for the budget, putting all that together, the leadership of Mr. DeLeo back there and of course, this gentleman up here. I don't have anything else, other than I would like to thank everybody that came out tonight and beating a jerk.